Do have another meeting somewhere, seven o'clock.
Okay, copies are circulating, in the interest of time, I will start. This is a brief PowerPoint, at least by comparison to the last one, as it relates to some points that the Levy Commission wishes to make about our history and some recent accomplishments we'd like to share with you and, of course, then have a nice discussion. I will breeze through these, however, since it is right before you, but the Levy Commission's created in 1911 under a state law to act as a caretaker of riverfront land with the express mission to develop public improvements and pursue economic development along the riverfront. Then in 1937, the state of Iowa relinquished title to all land between the high-water mark and the middle of the river, giving the city complete control over its riverfront. This greatly increased the breadth of the geographic responsibilities of the Levy Commission. Okay, and then the last point there really speaks to the mayoral appointments, six-year terms. This has allowed continuity, a vision with the Levy Commission, always working with the, over the last hundred years, this is our centennial year as you celebrate your 175th with the city, while still providing fresh perspectives on a regular basis with new appointees. Also, here's a couple of points related to ongoing improvements. Over time, years ago, you know, the creation of the seawalk sending storm waters, river ward, constructing the seawall on the harbor line, placing fill behind river improvements to increase the riverfront land, and actually, I don't know if many people know this, but the Levy Commission threw lease revenue, that's how it has earned its money, many years ago, before parking ramps, parking was along the riverfront, and all that money went to the Levy Commission, and in so doing, it actually constructed Municipal Stadium and gave it to the city. Very interesting, I think. From its inception, the Levy Improvement Commission has been dedicated, quite simply, to the preservation and improvement of the riverfront. This work has been mainly bankrolled by the, either the issuance of bonds, which was really, hasn't been done in real recent years, by the Levy Commission, and more recently strictly through lease revenues of riverfront property. We have about thirteen, I think, twelve to thirteen leases that are in current use. On that subject, obviously, many of you know that, that we actually, I think, we actually raised about four buildings two years ago, the Levy Commission did, that at one point really were revenue-producing, but in, in, you know, for the cause of River Vision implementation, those, that decision was made, you know, by the Levy Commission and, by, supported by the city, to, to, to implement River Vision and to move on accordingly. After approximately eighty years, about twenty years ago, the Levy Commission lost much of its operational power when the city council reclaimed control of the lease revenues for the 7.2 acres of river property to be leased to the gaming operators. This just suggests that, rather than increasing the, the abilities, it actually hindered it just, just a bit because there was this swath removed from the jurisdiction that once was revenue-producing and removed it. That, that's either here nor there, I just make it as a, as a point for, for all of you. Why continue? Why should the Levy Improvement Commission continue? It has a historical place in the social and economic fabric of Davenport, which we would not be quick, we should not be quick to throw away. Through the auspices of the Levy Improvement Commission, the citizens of Davenport have retained ownership of one of the most beautiful natural resources in the country. You know, all of us prize the riverfront around here. It's truly amazing that, that with the exception of maybe two or three parcels that are privately owned, the riverfront is, does belong to the citizens of Davenport and was platted that way by our founders. The makeup of the Levy Commission has consistently represented a broad spectrum of the Davenport citizenry. Levy Commission provides both a buffer of the city council in handling riverfront issues and, at the same time, a less highly-charged atmosphere for citizens to approach the city on riverfront issues. Also, the Levy Commission has focused strictly on the riverfront, which allows for more intense scrutiny of various issues. A major instance where the city removed river, where the city removed riverfront land from the control of the Levy Commission resulted in a lease which effectively prohibits the citizens of Davenport from making independent decisions about the most visible and valuable fifteen acres of our riverfront. Now, I would like to share with you about ten, ten recent accomplishments, and, and basically, the first one is the Iowa Great Places designation. This application process was spearheaded by the Levy Improvement Commission. The state awarded $286,000 for the Centennial Park Active Recreation Corridor, $100,000 for the front porch parkway, $100,000 for Centennial Park Sprayground, and $70,000 for the Leclerc Park Banshell Edition for a three-year total after our designation of over a half million dollars. Also, another point we touched on, so I can kind of breeze through this, is help to facilitate, coordinate the, the Farmers Market Initiative. Same with the Food Hub, which we spent some time talking about. We also are involved through its staff. We funded the initial RIGRi recruitment effort for $1,500, as last year we sought to have RIGRi take place here, and, and staff is involved in the event planning for this event that we have received. Facilitated the public planning process and is leading the redevelopment of former East Industrial Area into Riverfront Park. This is not standalone, it's not designed to be representative of standing alone, we're doing this together, but it's important to note that in this current fiscal year alone, Levy Commission spent $125,000 for the initial scope of work with, and also secured a significant donation or commitment from the Rotary Club as they celebrate their centennial year for, in addition to the area formerly known as the East Industrial Area, before we seek out a name. Another point, another recent accomplishment, assisting the city in the Friends of Veterans' Memorial Park by donating $50,000 in the current fiscal year to the initial and second phases of the development of the park. In the current fiscal year, we also allocated $133,000 for the Leclerc Park Banshell Edition project, secured $70,000 from Iowa Great Places, and secured $75,000 from the Scott County Regional Authority. All in that fiscal year, those three projects, Veterans' Memorial Park, former East Industrial Area, and the Banshell Edition at Leclerc Park, totals over $308,000 from the Levy Commission budget, leaving somewhere just under, south of $400,000 for their, they have both operating and, and capital that's combined, it's not separate accounts, and so it basically cut in half their fund. Another recent accomplishment, the Levy Commission partnership with the city is assisting in the effort to bring positive attention and deliberative recreational development to our riverfront for all to enjoy. Levy Commission actually pays each year $66,529,000 for sea, for seasonal employees within what's known as the Riverfront Maintenance Program. So, a couple of years ago, under Sebby's leadership, we actually were able to, you know, we used to have events on the weekend, and then on, on Monday morning, it would be kind of a mess, and if Sunday there was a windstorm, we'd really have a mess, and, and what we have are both cleanup initiatives underway every day up till, some staff are up till 10 o'clock at night, but also, they serve as ambassadors, so they are willing to give, you know, wayfinding directions and general city information as well, to work very well for the last couple of years, and, and we've been in partnership with parks through, through the $66,000 allocation annually. And also, in partnership with the city and the QCCBB, the Levy Commission converted the Union Station, which we, we also know about. Want to make mention that the Levy Commission coordinates free annual summer concerts has for the last eighty-six years on Sunday evenings, spend generally about $5,500 each year to, to support about seven concerts. We also reach out to nonprofits to do inexpensive refreshments that people have come to enjoy those, those nice summer nights. Also, we have a grant program that we provide assistance to, we, what we like is new events, trying to, most recently, really play up the utilization of, of Centennial Park, so like the Kite Festival, the Celtic Island Games, et cetera, et cetera, are some new, new examples of some new events along our riverfront in Centennial Park as that's been built out, and manages a dozen lease agreements with riverfront tenants, and of course, during flood events, their point of contact is yours truly. And, and just the future, these are questions, they're not intended to necessarily have answers, certainly not tonight, but, you know, when we looking at the handicaps of the Levy Improvement Commission as it relates to sufficient stream of income moving forward, and, you know, where we go from here, as it relates to that, you know, just recently, we were able to secure a, a tenant in the second floor of Union Station, which helped to close a, a operational gap in our, in our budget. And so, you know, there are tenants, there is money, we spent on a lot of very worthwhile projects in this current fiscal year, and are very eager and interested in continuing to partner with the, the city council to continue that. As I just looked in a slide to remind us all of, about what it is we find so attractive and, you know, what our greatest asset here in, in Davenport, so. I breezed through that, I apologize.
It's alright.
The discussion should ensue.
I think there are some folks here who wanted to speak up on the issue of the Levy Improvement Commission. I think Bill, you were, you asked to speak earlier about the Rotary Club, so Alderman know how all that fits together, and why don't you come up where we can hear you?
Rotary Club of Davenport Centennial is this year, and they, as of today, have agreed that they're gonna build a gazebo in the East Industrial Area that represents a donation of about $100,000. Greg Larsson's made drawings, and they, I know that they're gonna ask the Levy Commission to, to act on that on the, their meeting in June, so it's a, it's a done deal.
So, you know, helping secure some money, which we would have to come up with. Anyone else? I think Kathy Wine, you've been involved in this issue over the years, what's your thoughts on the Levy Commission, and what do you reckon?
I'll just make two comments.
Come to the microphone, where we can hear you. Yeah, would you? Introduce yourself, so everybody knows, and most of us here know who you are.
I'm Kathy Wine, I'm a citizen of Davenport, and I'm executive director of River Action. Worked with Levy Commission for 27 years in that capacity. We have a kind of a unique situation, I think, in that we, when we're in waterfront conferences throughout the country, can talk about the Davenport Levy Commission, and we're the envy of the nation. So many people will say, "Oh, my gosh, you have so much, it takes us forever to do. You own your prop, own the waterfront in Davenport, and you have a commission that is strictly set aside to work on those improvements." And that's what we're striving to do, and I want to say that that is a wonderful thing, and we're always happy to talk about it and proud that it exists here. The other thing is, as a citizens' action group, we could not exist without citizen input and committees and work, that valuable work that comes back to us and gives us power because citizens are invested, engaged, and that's what you have with the Levy Commission. I think it's wonderful, and I think that's worth keeping.
Is there anyone else here probably who came down to talk about this tonight? Please introduce yourself, and what organization or group you're with, or...
Hi, I'm Kate Patterson, I'm a citizen of Davenport, I'm on the Riverfront Task Force, but I think it's, the Levy Commission is very important to this community. Since the late seventies, I've been going to Levy Commission. I was interested in short leases and for the grain elevators, and it's taken a while, but we're getting there, and I, I think the point made about how citizens maybe are more, are more, less reluctant, maybe come to a city hall meeting to express things, I think a small group at the Levy Commission sometimes brings out concerns that people are feeling for your disgust, and there's more chance to have discussions with the Levy Commission. But I think that in the late seventies, and the river was not a big deal in this town, didn't seem, now we really appreciate it, and we, we really need some, some caretakers, and I think that's important, that the Levy Commission that's devoted just to the riverfront is a, a big asset to our community and to the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else pro or con want to talk about the Levy Commission? And I'm gonna turn it over to Alderman, he might have some questions, if there's someone else out there that, I don't, we're probably gonna shut down here in about ten minutes.
I got a comment. In 1937, you know that the state of Iowa owns the bottom of the river, they have jurisdiction over the bottom of the river, from the meander line to the center of the channel. Davenport in 1937 was given jurisdiction of that, if you look at the legal description, the legal description from the meander line to the center of the channel is under the jurisdiction of the Levy Commission. If, if you were to disband the Levy Commission, I'm not an attorney, but I'm pretty sure the state of Iowa would take that rap, and that, that's a pretty valuable thing to have. When you put the gaming boat out there, I, I helped John Connolly put it there, the city of Davenport being dealt with the United States government, okay, instead of the state of Iowa dealing with the Corps, and that's a valuable thing to have up and down the riverfront.
Anyone else? Okay, Alderman, questions? Bill?
Just had a quick comment, Daley. One thing that stands out here is right at the end, Levy Commission does not have a sufficient stream of income to make improvements desired on the riverfront. I know that they've lost a lot of leases, all those places are gone now, I'm just wondering if this is not, Parks is taking over more and more of the riverfront, and will continue to do that, it looks like, because of our plans. I wonder if now, I don't mean tonight, because we don't have the time, but maybe now is the time to discuss making Levy Commission advisory rather than regulatory.
Well, that's why we're here tonight, to talk about those points, whoever put it on the agenda, so. Nathan?
Actually, I'm kind of the other end of the spectrum. To be honest, we do have a lot of parks, I mean, obviously, Parks has got a lot of stuff to do, and personally, what I would like to see is work out some kind of agreement where the Levy Commission runs everything between the river and River Drive, you know, and the Parks Department is in charge of all the other parks that we have in the city, because the, the fear that I have is, is this big fish is gonna take a lot of resources from all the other little parks that we have up, up north, you know, in all of our wards, and this, this is what I'm concerned about. If you have somebody that's solely focused on the riverfront and they market it, they, they can advertise it as, "Okay, you want your event here, you want your event there," or whatnot, you know, that'd be fine. We can still do the big projects, but, but they're in charge of the operation from day to day.
I think, just if I, if I could, Sebby might have a comment or two about that too, but I think that's the intention of the, the Riverfront Maintenance Program, that I don't know how far, how long that's been in, in existence, but we have been adjusting it over the last, not the last couple of years, but prior to that, so it's always been around $65,000, and that has helped to actually augment, rather than buying all-new equipment, you know, we use Parks, exist, some of the existing infrastructure, just it allows for additional employees, seasonal employees, that can augment and help with those very things that you're talking about in that area along the river.
Is that, is that eastern all the way to Credit Island, or what parks is?
It is. Riverfront.
So you guys paid $65,000 for that whole strip, mowing and everything, what, what all the...
Yeah, I don't know if it's itemized to be...
Sebby, you wanna address this?
For, I mean, if it's item, to cover it entirely, like you're suggesting, but I think if you took, if you remove $65,000 from Parks' budget, that would be, that would be a tough...
Yeah, if you did remove the $65,000 from the budget currently, none of the work along the riverfront would happen, which is quite a few acres of parkland, you know, and much more high visibility too, so, you know, in that sense. And for the Levy Commission to do the same work would cost a lot more than $65,000 if they started from scratch, including...
We're also going to be adding more grass to Centennial, more grass to Veterans', and...
Actually, mowing grass is the easiest part, it's the other, the debris collection, the restroom cleaning, and all those other things are the, and the special events that we do yearly, so.
Jeff?
I'll follow up on the same kind of line here, that, this is, the discussion is what I hear all the time, Levy Commission, Parks, Levy Commission will be in control or overseeing, deciding, and, but then Parks has the work to do, and they do it, and just like Sebby said, the rest, they, they do everything, especially the events cause all those concerns, and we bring all these things, which is a great thing, but Parks has, I mean, operational control of everything that goes on, so why wouldn't Parks have it? I don't, I'm not saying I'm fan either way here, but that's the discussion every time I, if there's a discussion about the riverfront, this is the subject that comes up. Levy Commission will be the oversight, the board, and then, but Parks has to do everything, so why shouldn't Parks be in charge? Or why shouldn't they be equal on an advisory level? Again, not sure which way I want to go yet, but that's, that's what I'm...
One point.
So, so that's it, and then the, I guess, because this is the way I understand it, chain-of-command type things, where other things come to us whenever we discuss, the Levy Commission is kind of autonomous and does their thing, and again, not saying that's bad, because I understand buffer thing, I, I kind of get that point now, but most things happen, and we just, we meet once a year, and there's, I think there should be more of a, and that, it should, might simply be a scheduled quarterly meetings or discussions more often than, like, tonight was, we had to beg for this, and we hadn't met for a year almost, so, that type of thing seems to come up a lot, so, those are my kind of concerns and points, and I don't know who wants to, or address them or not.
Actually, the relationship we have now is working great, as Steve mentioned, I mean, it's a great working relationship, as far as the budgeting or the monies, I mean, I'm sure that could be worked out in other ways too, I mean, there are many, many ways to do that, but the relationship is a good one, there's always constant communication between staff and the Levy Commission, and we do, do offer a good product out there, you know, so.
I think you're suggesting more quarterly meetings, they come in and report, let's finally do that with the Tourism and Information Bureau, you know, it's simply just, they seem to function okay, and we, it's like the Airport Commission, we don't have them in here every week, you know, can have them here every week or why?
Quarterly. More often, you know, sessions, I, we do try, you know, through, every month when we go to meet, the meeting packet you all receive, and I, I know there's awfully a hefty packet that goes with that, but that, it's not an edited version for you, I mean, it's, it's what the minutes reflect from the previous meeting.
Steve, I think, yeah, what you heard is plug into the city council quarterly or something, and I think just make reports.
Right, one, one, one point I just want to make about, the Levy Commission doesn't get the revenue when there's an event on the riverfront, you guys get that, just so you know, that goes into the general fund, and so I think, you kind of alluded to that with Alderman, that, that somehow we own it, and then the Parks has to deal with it without money, but theoretically, I mean, it goes in the general fund, it may not go to Parks, but it does go to the city.
Jeff?
Yeah, you mentioned, Steve, the lost revenue from the Corps being on the riverfront, and then your role about gaming money to increase, what do you... We, we actually, some of that money goes to the downtown Schmidt, I think, some of our...
It's a payment in lieu of taxes.
So, so I just, back to Steve, what did you mean, gaming money to increase?
Riverfront's not in the...
Well, I know that.
Jeff? If I might, the money that goes to the Schmidt is totally different, it was a private agreement. In years past, that revenue would have gone to the Levy Commission under the ordinances, but when the casino came in, the city did basically what Steve said, they parshelled off that piece, and that income came to the city of Davenport, where in years past, all of the revenues from the riverfront leases would have gone to, to this group. But the money that the casino pays to the downtown partnership is not part of the city's Schmidt fund, it's, it, it is an independent agreement that they made with the downtown partnership, rather than have an attorney general's or a court case on whether things on the river could be taxed or not.
So, back to the...
Clear enough?
And I think that Steve understated the impact a little bit, when they, initially the, finally group was negotiating with the Levy Commission for the leasing, and then when the city council saw the figures, they said, "Well, no, we'll take that over." That figure of, that was all that Levy parking, you may recall, twenty-five, eleven years ago, how much parking we had on the Davenport, that figure was close to $900,000, but the Levy Commission was denied because the city became the sole agent, as they sold to the Corps.
So this is the reason we need to generate more money through all this hub, food hub, and other things perhaps, but...
Dr. Hathaway wants to...
Dr. Hathaway's been on the commission, well, you can, forty years, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that having that river down there has given a lot of responsibility to the city of Davenport that you don't realize, but anything above the dam there is the most dangerous part of the Mississippi River, and as far as somebody falling in, animals, what have you, it's just a place, place where if you're in, you're going under the dam, and you're probably gonna die, and we, we've had to watch over the years to be su, sure that we have industry and things going on there that are protecting the public. I spent fifty years teaching water safety for the Corps of Engineers, the State of Iowa, and the United States Power Squadron, and for years, we had fifty or sixty people a year involved in a class on water safety. Last two or three years, three or four people would show up, so after fifty years, I informed them that I would no longer have time to teach them because there's nobody to teach, they've lost interest in it. But I would say this, that, that along, along the waterfront there, we've had people wanting to put in a floating dock, they want to do different things, we can't have people in, put into that danger. There's a wa, there's a fence down there protecting those places to keep people from falling in, and we don't need to make openings in them to let people fall in, it's just too dangerous, and the bike path along there is a very wonderful thing. Lindsey Park Boat Club, fifty years ago, forty-five years ago, anchored the boats out in the river on buoy, on, they had buoys out there, you hung on to them, you know, and what eventually they did was they built that wall around it, which really made it safe, people falling in there, and there's no current, they can get out again, and that's, that's an important thing. But if you go down to Quad City Marine or whatever that's there currently, if you go in there, you're probably not gonna get out, there's a ladder about every hundred yards or something along there, and a long way between ladders, and, so I think that, that our commission has a responsibility to see to it that this is adhered to, that we protect the public and yet provide the services necessary to make, we gotta enjoy that river, that's the most beautiful thing. Davenport's one of the lucky places to be on this river and have, be able to have people come here to enjoy it.
Well, I think the question sort of came up earlier was, should it be an advisory commission, or should it be put under the parks or something else?
I tell you what, Alderman get elected every couple of years, they come and go, and we've got people here who have spent a lot of time studying this thing and overseeing it, and I think that the Levy Commission has people interested in the river who are on this thing, not, I, we don't get paid, we don't get a dime out of it, we just come here and do our duty and, and do it because we like to do it, and we, we like our river. But I'd say this, that it'd be a big waste of, of all the years of energy we put into this thing to turn it over to people who are elected to run the city, not to protect people from the water, I mean, it's a separate thing.
We're not saying get rid of it.
No, no, they're not saying get rid of it, they're saying maybe put it on the park and recreation.
They're thinking authority way, the, the people around here are the ones who know what's going on, and that's what we need to do. You guys got a deck with a lot of projects.
They gotta go, okay, Mike. Any other questions? Anybody got, before I leave? Okay. All right, so, any other questions for the Alderman? Any other question, probably, yes, one more time.
In the 1990s, the city of Davenport was listed on the, the federal government maintains a list at places where they're gonna do environmental enhancement, and ninety-three it was listed, the DNR and the Fish and Wildlife supported them, the effort was, kind of to be to improve Credit Island's slough. In recent years, environmental enhancement money of the federal government has been escalated, primarily because the Corps wants to improve the lock and dams. For example, when Clinton, they, they dredged under the environmental management money, but Joyce Slough made a very nice marina out of that, and I, I firmly believe that the Levy Commission should be funded so that they could pursue those federal dollars of environmental management and environmental enhancement money. I think if Davenport continues to put their name in front of the Fish and Wildlife, the DNR, and the Corps, somewhere down the road, you know, get money to improve everything from the Crescent Bridge to the Utaas Street, I, I think it's important to do that.
Alderman, boom.
Yeah, and, and I agree, I, you know, we have a number of commissions and boards that, that represent the city to the public, and I go, I go to these meetings, as I used to go to the planning zone, just, just counsel. You forgot your... This, this council, whoop, you forgot your conspiracy. I mean, this council would not wanna sit and, and handle the intricacies, nor could they easily do that, of plan and zone type issues as much as they do here with waterfront issues. Um, the ability of this commission not only to turn rough land into parks, so that we do have the parks that we are all talking about maintaining, but you look at the, the things that they were able to do with the Farmers Market. Trust me, I was involved in, in those discussions, and there was, there was a real sticky wicket that was happening. The council could not have interceded in such a way as the commission did to resolve those issues. The council would have had a difficult time getting their arms around and spending enough time to work with the food hub to be able to, to bring an idea like that along. There, we keep touting our city as a prime example of how to live with the river, and I think it takes a commission that is dedicated to look at these issues to, to be able to, to sustain that type of a statement. There's still a lot that we have to do to flood-proof our city, to, to, to learn how to live with it and learn how to manage it properly, and I personally wanna have a commission that sends me recommendations after vetting all of this type of information. I wanna be able to reflect off of what they say, and we'll still have our yes or no, but I, I think it's good for us, and I think it's good for the city, and I think it's good for the citizens, that, that we have this type of buffer in between us.
Anyone else? I think, I don't know, consensus would leave well enough alone, for me, I'm concerned that's another volunteer advocacy group, its purpose is to preserve and protect the riverfront from whatever, and it's worked pretty well for ninety-nine years, whereas I'm certain we'll let it go, there's...
You okay with this, Sebby?
They may run out of money, and if they do, that's a different story, but, uh, yes...
When River Gulf Range left our waterfront, they left a city eight thousand dollars short of a rent for that property down there, and that didn't go to the Levy Commission, it went to the city in general, but it was, some of it was needed by the Levy Commission for improvements and what have you, but anyhow, we've never replaced that, it's an empty space down there that's had been nothing but an expense to us since then. We gave River Gulf Range to Bettendorf.
But we gained the riverfront, which is a purpose of the Levy Commission.
That's a purpose, so I'm saying, we gained an expense too.
And we got traffic and dirt filled out of that neighborhood, so anyway, anything else? Seeing others, we'll close down.